All right, at 6:30, we'll call the May 11th City Council meeting to order if we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Did you hear me now?
Yep, we're starting the regular meeting.
All right, do we have any?
No, we'll just do this.
Okay. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
I would like to make in addition to start the discussion about opening up businesses and places of worship in Mayor.
All right. Yep, we'll make that a 6-1-E if it's approved. I'll look for motion to approve the agenda with that one addition.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries 4-0. That will move us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss something that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, hold the same sign. Motion carries 4-0. I think it's to 6-1-A, 2020 Mindot Highway 25 project.
Okay, so Mayor and Council, in front of you today is the 2020 Mindot Highway 25 Reconstruction Cooperative Agreement. So Mindot has been planning for the Highway 25 project within and between the cities of Watertown and Mayor for a few years. A summary of the work includes resurfacing of Highway 25 from County Road 30 in Mayor to State Street in Watertown. And both projects include extensive work within the city limits. This includes Mindot constructing a sidewalk from 5th Street to 7th Street to the Roundabout. In addition, Mindot is proposing upgrades to sidewalks in the downtown area to meet ADA standards. The project was originally scheduled for July 2020 for both the city of Mayor and Watertown. The Mayor portion will now start in August of 2020, and Watertown's construction will now take place in spring of 2021. As part of the getting ready for the project, Mindot is seeking to finalize a cooperative construction agreement, which is in your packet, it's number 1-036535 for the improvements. The agreement is a cost agreement that approves and provides the city's share of the cost for utility adjustments on Highway 25. So the state will be performing the grading, bituminous servicing, bituminous mill and overlay and ADA improvement construction. Per the city's approval and request, the project included utility adjustments and a pedestrian crosswalk flasher system. So that includes moving the lights so that we are able to then be ADA compliant, and then also we are able to then have our snow equipment get around and plow the main stretch in the winter. So the total project cost for the downtown improvements by Mindot is $660,000. And about 180,000 of that is to remove, salvage, and relocate and reinstall the lighting. And generally, this would be the cost to the city since it's the city's utilities. But Mindot submitted an application to the Main Street funding to cover the cost. It was rejected originally, but then they put it again for an exception, and it was approved. And then the remaining is for new sidewalk, curb and gutter, additional drainage, and moving the curb line towards the center of the street a little bit more. That's kind of, in order to get that increased sidewalk with, they're moving the sidewalk in a little bit so that the street is becoming more narrow. So, but it would maintain the same parking standards as currently. So Mindot has to be able to apply it to both, or they've used this funding for both the city of Mayor and Watertown. So the city costs, so in all projects, there are standard costs related to cover a proportion of the project. And for us, that includes cost for mobilization, traffic control, and the pedestrian crosswalk if the city decides to move forward with that. So that cost is $19,100 for the pedestrian crosswalk, that's for the equipment and the installation. We did do a pedestrian crosswalk in 2018 for about, a little over 9,000. That includes concrete. The equipment cost was from Tapco for $8,852.69. So if we wanted to take that out, we could essentially just do our own installation and take that to try and reduce the cost a little bit. But, so, right now, as part of the project costs, if we took out the pedestrian crosswalk, it would be $27,058.84 for the total portion for the city of Mayor. So... It would be, if we removed the pedestrian crosswalk, it would be, out of that 660,000, we would owe 27... Or we'd owe a little bit more than 27,000 if, because we would owe 8% of that as well. I didn't, because, how do I explain this? So if we, without, with the pedestrian crosswalk, 8% is 3,692.71, for a total of 49,851.55. But if we took out the pedestrian crosswalk, we would take out that portion of the engineering as well, if that makes sense. So we would be looking at about, I would have to recalculate, probably a little under 30,000 for the project. So with that, there is a resolution that Mindot is looking for the council to pass for approving to execute this agreement. With that, I, and then that would allow myself and the mayor to execute the agreement, and then allow them to move forward with their project. They did provide, when we did have a conversation with Mindot, they did say that this is, these are standard for all contracts, and that they did mention that they would make sure that, because I did question knowing about these costs ahead of time, and they did say that they would make sure that these were communicated for future projects. So with that, I would take any questions on this agreement, but these are standard costs that all cities generally pay.
Dave, is there anything you want to add or need to add?
No, I would, I would agree that this is not an unusual cost-sharing agreement with Mindot. Same cost-sharing agreement we use with the Roundabout. I would say what is unusual is this is coming in late compared to the conversations you've had with Mindot. That certainly would have been better for everybody if this would have been presented early on as that this was, that this standard cost-sharing agreement was also going to be applied. Because I think the question had been asked more than once as to what the city's costs were going to be, and obviously, this piece of it didn't come up. I think they were viewing it in big-picture terms as to what the costs would be. But anyway, cutting to the chase, it's not an unusual cost-sharing agreement. It's unfortunate that it's coming to your attention this late in the process, I would say.
Historically, you've seen this with other cities.
Yes.
This is appropriate, these are appropriate.
Yep, and again, really same policy we used when we built the Roundabout. You know, Mindot paid all of their shares of the project kind of based on the same agreement. The city was responsible for storm sewer, you know, kind of the city utility portions that needed to be dealt with. Mindot paid for the trunk highway items. Engineering was figured based on 8% of the construction costs is what Mindot paid for their share of the engineering for the project. So kind of a reversed role in that scenario, but same math.
But the difference is, is there, where the Roundabout was a new project, this Highway 25 is to fix the errors that they had made in 2008, '07, when they built Highway 25 by not doing the ADA compliance. So from all the discussions that I can recall here, our cost was going to be virtually zero except to help figure out where we wanted to put the lighting. And we were told that that was going to be very nominal, which we were in agreement of doing.
And I think we also knew we probably have to pay for the crosswalk.
And the crosswalk, yeah, yeah. But I'm, right now, taking out the crosswalk, it was just to help figure out with the engineering of where to put the lighting. Now, with the cost now, you know, if we take out the crosswalk, what exactly is that covering? Is that covering the addition of the sidewalk to, from 5th to 7th?
It's covering, so it's covering the...
Because we shouldn't have to pay, according to Mindot, when they bring in here.
So the costs that are left are all associated with the cost of dealing with city utilities. So for instance, if we were doing a city project and there was a Center Point gas main in the way, we'd tell Center Point they had to move their gas main because they're in our right-of-way by permit. We're in, we're in Mindot's right-of-way by permit, same scenario. So when they do the melon overlay, they have to adjust gate valves up and down to match the finished surface of the pavement. They have to deal with manholes, adjust them when they're done. We have a hydrant, one hydrant that has to be relocated to accommodate the sidewalk work. So that 27,000 is the cost estimate to deal with our city utilities that are in their right-of-way.
Yeah, I was trying to understand that, because then, you know, I was hearing the portion of the trail from 5th to 7th. So I didn't know where all that fit in there.
Right, so all of the infrastructure costs are being paid by Mindot. Their standard cost-sharing policy that runs through their finance department, they noted correctly, according to their policy, that the cost associated with dealing with our public utilities is not a Mindot cost. It is a local cost, and is our responsibility as a permit holder in their right-of-way. That's the basis of it.
These are costs we would have had, no matter what.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, you know, if they had brought it up sooner, I don't think the answer at the end changed. It should have been brought up sooner.
So if we took out the crosswalk and did it ourselves, I know there were some issues with getting power to it, or were there additional costs that could possibly happen? I mean, is the 19,000, are we saying it's too expensive because the one we did on the other side was a lot less? And that if we did it ourselves, it'd actually be cheaper?
The, yeah. So this is, right, so this is the estimate to do the work. So it's not the actual cost, it's the estimate. So when it's bid out, theoretically, we'll have an exact cost as to what it's going to cost to do it with the contractor. The reason the estimate is more than what it cost us to do it in the past is we bought the equipment, but your staff installed it. So this accounts for them furnishing and installing the equipment, which is, you know, so the labor associated with that is, adds to the cost. So the idea would be is if the bids came in and you were uncomfortable or did not believe that that was a fair cost for you to get your pedestrian crossing there, that you would tell Mindot, "We don't want to do this, so take it out of the contract." And at that point, then, it would be up to you to determine how you wanted to move forward, whether or not you were going to seek a permit from them to put it in yourselves, or wait and see what happens, or whatever you want to do.
Would there be anything that would limit or prohibit us from putting up that crosswalk sign? I mean, infrastructure and permit-wise, would there be anything that would limit or prohibit us from doing it ourselves?
I don't believe so. I think that the biggest thing is we just have to take a look at, I don't know off the top of my head, the electric piece of that. I'm trying to think of how the ones on the...
I think on the fire station side, it's all cement and the sidewalk. So it's not just open ground to put it in.
Right, so that would be the kind of, I guess, the piece of it we would have to determine is if you wanted to move forward on yourself, is it just simply taking out? We'd have a little figuring to do as to what we would want them to leave us so that we could do it in the future.
So we could still back out of this once final bids come in of the crosswalk part?
I would say that if you want, if you, at that time, were uncomfortable with the cost, you'd tell Mindot to take it out. Or not install it.
I think it might be a little bit more only for the fact that, of where it would go.
Yep. And I mean, similar to the conversations we had when we talked about it the first time, is that there still seems to be some questions as to that's, if that's really what you want to do. And that's up to you.
Can we tell them what make and model we want? I mean, I'm assuming we want it to be the same one.
And that's what's in the bid right now. Now, you know, I mean, from my standpoint, I'd say if you want to do it, this is the most efficient way to do it versus coming back in, trying to put it in yourself when it's all going to be ripped up and exposed during construction. I believe that's still the most efficient way to get it done. Now, whether or not you think you could save some money, you probably could. If you donated, well, I shouldn't say donated, but if you applied your labor to the project after the fact. But again, then, you know, theoretically, you're taking your crews away from something else they would be doing, and there's time and effort that's not free, so to speak.
Any other questions on that? Any clarification needed? I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 5.11.20.18 with or without the pedestrian crosswalk flashing system.
Make that motion.
To include or exclude the flasher.
Include it for now.
To include it for now, okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, hold the same sign. Motion carries 4-0. 6-1-B garbage service contract.
Okay, Mayor and Council, at the April 27th, 2020 council meeting, the council moved to move forward with the contract with Waste Management based on their proposal. That was submitted for the garbage RFP. So Waste Management is currently in the process of drafting the contract based on the proposal that was submitted. And they are asking for additional clarification on if and what extra services a city would like in the contract. So this would include organics, an organics drop site for five cents per month per home, curb site cleanup for 71 cents per month per home, and/or leaf cleanup for 25 cents per month per home. These were included in the overall monthly cost comparisons when we did comparisons with the other proposals. And even with these costs, they did come in lower for overall costs than the other proposals. If you look on page 29, you'll see the garbage rates that are being proposed for the next five years. You would simply just add on those costs for those extra services per each tier. So at this time, I'm just asking for further discussion on if you want to provide some or all of these options for residents. Currently, we do not have an organics program, and we do not have a fall leaf cleanup event. We only have the curb side cleanup with Republic.
Would that curb side cleanup be just the one day like we currently have now?
Yes. I think you can still call for like same-day pickup for large bulk items, but yeah, curb side cleanup...
Would there be an extra charge for that?
There would, yep.
And so like, first one up, organics, if we decide to, everyone gets charged that no matter what?
Right.
It's not an opt-in or opt-out?
Right.
And how many people are doing organics now?
We don't have the program right now. It was originally with Elite Republic. When Republic took it over, they stopped providing that service because it wasn't...
I thought they had said two people were doing it for some reason.
There were two people, they said, that were doing it when Elite was doing the program. And then when they took it over, it wasn't, it wasn't worth, or they decided that it wasn't worth providing that service because of that.
And any of these items, if we decide not to do them now, I'm assuming we could always renegotiate if we get, we decide not to go with organics, and also we start getting a lot of interest, we could add it in the following year, amend the contract?
I'm assuming we could amend the contract.
So you're looking for direction on to add these into the contract or not, correct?
Correct.
I would say I want curb side cleanup, I think that's very popular. I know it's the most expensive option, but I also think that their rates are very reasonable. I don't really see a need for organics for the fall leaf cleanup just because we do have the compost site that I think people do utilize. And...
I agree.
And we don't have, like, I mean, my neighborhood has a lot of mature trees for leaves, but we don't. We just bring them to the compost site if needed.
And that would be, that's a one-day thing, is my...
Curb side cleanup, yes.
No, the fall leaf.
Oh, yes, fall leaf is one day as well, yep.
One-day thing?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see a need for that.
I don't think people are going to sit and wait for that one day for their leaves and pay 25 cents.
I would assume, I would, yeah, I'd rather extend our hours at compost and let people get in there more. Do you need a motion, Maggie? Or do you just look, direction, is direction good enough?
A motion would be good to include curb side cleanup in the contract.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. To add the curb side cleanup only.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, hold the same sign. Motion carries 4-0. That'll take us to 6-1-C liquor license reimbursement, please.
Okay, so in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the state of Minnesota has ordered all bars and restaurants to close as gatherings places. So recognizing the financial impact of the closure of these establishments, some cities have issued refunds on a prorated basis to determine, to be determined by the length of the government shut, or order. So the city, so with that, the city is considering tonight the reimbursement of a prorated liquor license for these three establishments that we have in the city. So we currently charge 1,800 annually per on-sale liquor license. As I mentioned, we have three establishments with on-sale liquor licenses. So for example, if the closure ended up being two months or 60 days, the total estimated financial impact to the city would be about $900 or 300 per establishment. So two of the bar restaurants, they have been able to stay open and use their off-sale liquor license and Sunday licenses. One establishment is only a bar and has shut down completely. So therefore, the city would further reimburse this bar by prorating the off-sale and Sunday as well. So again, if it was 60 days or two months, the off-sale is $100 annually, the Sunday is 200, and therefore, the city would reimburse an additional $50 to this bar. So altogether, the city is looking at $950 for 60 days. So in the packet, there is a resolution on page 43 that would allow the city to reimburse establishments depending on the length of the shutdown. We don't exactly know what that is yet, what the length will be. We're projecting it, currently, it's projected to be May 18th, 2020, but that's subject to change. So the resolution is essentially allowing us to approve this, not knowing exactly how long the stay-at-home order will be. But in the packet, I did give you an example of what a two-month cost would be, or reimbursement would be.
Any questions for Maggie on that? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 5.11.20.19 authorizing refunds prorated for liquor license fees.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I agree. It's not a lot, but it's, it helps some. I did, there was some conversation of should it be a reimbursed, you know, should we try to reimburse or maybe reduce next years? And I did, and I ended up talking to one of the bar owners, and they would prefer to get the reimbursement and have it this year. So, all right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, hold the same sign. Motion carries 4-0. And that'll take us to 6-1-D, the 5th Street development request.
Okay, so I can start, and then I might have Dave jump in and help me out a little bit. So Mayor and Council, 5th Street Lot Development, this agenda item is related to a request from the owners of a vacant parcel on 5th Street. In your packet, there is an aerial shot of where that is located. I can hold that up, hold on. The request is that the city pay for half the street or the northern half of the street, which would be about $6,500, along with the costs associated with gaining the necessary easements right-of-way from Mayor Lutheran High School. Just a little background, the property is zoned residential, and the current owners are hoping to sell the property to a developer for a residential building. The lot currently has water and sewer stubs for hookup. The city is requiring, per code that, and we discussed this at a previous March meeting, that 5th Street be extended and paved to provide access to the lot if it developed. That road cost is projected to be around $13,000 total. When reviewing the right-of-way records for 5th Street, it was discovered that the right-of-way only covered the southern half of the road. The issue was discovered with Mayor Lutheran High School, who owns the northern half, and the school indicated that obtaining the easement would not be an issue. Again, at the March 20, March 2020 meeting, the council approved that the city would pay to clean up the easement documentation if the developer was interested in developing and extending the road. So since that discussion, the current owner has sent a letter to the city asking the city to consider paying for half of the pavement cost for the extension on top of the, submitting the easement documentation. So with that, the council has to determine whether participating in the cost of the road is in the city's best interest for the development of this parcel. So again, considering that if this lot does get developed, it would bring in tax revenue. So with that, just, Dave, if you want to add anymore, I know that this lot has a lot of history and...
Yeah, I mean, this is just a tricky piece of street here. You have the one lot that is ready to build on without the street extension, though, you know, our position has always been you have to extend the street before you can build on that lot. The issue gets to be with the school on the north side of the road, it dead-ends in the city property. Eventually, you know, we've talked about at least in our transportation plan that that would be extended over to the gravel road, which is in the township, which we have some issues and uncertainty about what the timing of that might be to do that. So it ends up being just a kind of an unusual situation where you have one property owner really needing to have this road extension to be able to do anything with their lot, but really no other benefiting properties to help share the cost of it. The cost estimate, I think, is $13,000, somewhere in that range, which assumes that the existing gravel that's there right now that leads down to the school's storage shed could more or less be used as base. You'd have to probably bring in a little bit more... could more or less be used as base, you'd have to probably bring in a little bit more gravel, but more, just shape that up, put a paved surface on it, uh, twenty-eight feet wide to match the width of the road that's there right now. Um, so, what our discussions with the developer have been is, well, the first discussion was his asking the city, what are you going to require me to do to build on that lot? We came back to him, said, okay, we think we got the easement issue figured out, um, or, or that that can be resolved, but you would have to, uh, extend the street. And they're coming back, basically requesting, uh, some financial help to do that, that they be responsible for their half of the road that fronts their property, but, uh, not be responsible for the other half of the road. Um, like Maggie said, you know, this has been hanging around for quite a while. There is, uh, some benefit to the city to be able to get this hooked up to water and sewer, get those fees, get it on the, the, uh, tax rolls. Um, but it, it's ultimately up to the council as to whether or not, uh, you think that, uh, it makes sense to facilitate this happening or not.
Did they give, was there any other rationale or reasoning or, I mean, for request, I mean, more so than it's just, they don't want to pay it and?
Well, they, they, in their letter, you know, they tried to lay out some of the, kind of the costs that, that they have put into it and what the, um, they, they touched on it, but when they developed the lot next to it to the west, they did have to do some utility work to extend water and sewer past the pro, both properties, um, you know. So again, I mean, all, all normal things that we would ask a developer to do. This is just a little unusual when we're talking about single lots and, um, you know, you have a property owner on the other side of the road that has no financial interest in this, you know, so it's, it, just a little bit different scenario than we usually run into when we're asking a developer to do something, when this is just kind of a one-off deal and.
Did the city have to incur any costs, um, when we were doing any of the easement stuff with Mayor Lutheran High?
We haven't done any of that yet, you know, so that, that's hanging out there. I mean, it's an issue whether or not this goes now or in the future, that, uh, that, that probably needs to be resolved. But, uh, no work has been done on that right now, it's really just, uh, th- this would necessitate that it, we need to address it now versus sometime in the future.
Well, I think eventually we plan on redoing all of Fifth Street.
Right. So, yeah, so if, if, if that was a city project and we were redoing that, then, you know, the idea would be you'd assess the property owners on both sides of the road and kind of coming back to their request that they understand and don't have an issue paying their frontage on their side of the road, but believe that, uh, incurring the entire cost of extending the city street is more than, uh, is feasible for them to develop that lot.
Any other questions? And are they ready to sell it and then develop? I, I mean, if we did this, is this something that's going to happen, that do we have any indication?
Yeah, my.
There's no sale sign on the property.
Yeah, I, I think they, my understanding is they have somebody that's interested in buying the lot and building on it. You know, now, if, if you were, from a logistics standpoint, if you were going to do this, if you, if you decided that you were going to participate in the cost, what I would suggest is you would get some quotes to extend that road and, uh, you would know exactly what the costs are going to be and that you would require them to put the money in a security somewhere that, um, when, when it's, you're not going to send them a bill when it's done, you're going to get the money before the work is done.
And this is just putting down blacktop, this isn't curb gutter or anything?
No, no, just getting a paved surface, basically the same width of what's there now and, and getting it to the east edge of that lot. So that you can bring a driveway past it and you have a paved surface all the way down.
Any other questions? Comments? Excuse me. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Is there a resolution wrapped with this one, Maggie?
There is not.
No, I think, uh, we're just looking for direction on the, from the council as to whether or not this is something you would entertain or, or not, so that, uh, we can get back to the applicant and let them know where, where things stand.
I mean, I struggle blacktopping it and then, three years from now, we're going to do curb and gutter on Fifth Street or something, because I know that's kind of future outlook of that section of road to line up with the rest of that development that has curb and gutter now.
So then, it, along those lines, I guess, you know, another option would be to tell them, we want you to build a twelve-foot wide, or a, basically a driveway off of the end of the road and that that will be acceptable until sometime in the future when the road's reconstructed. Not normally what we do, but it's a, it's a dead-end property or, you know, it's dead-end right now. That would be another option to tell, and then you just tell them that's one hundred percent your cost, but again, it's, it's just kind of a goofy deal.
Five years down the road, we haven't done anything and now what and?
Well, when is Fifth Street, we have it on our, kind of our plan of when we wanted to address that road and then talk about if we're paying for it to do an assessment like the rest of the neighborhood had done ten years ago.
Yeah, so the assumption would be is if you just let them build the long driveway, is that that would serve them till whenever there was a road project and at that time, they would be assessed for their portion of the project.
I would just hate to, like, us pay half and then later we're like, hey, now we're going to pay more. I kind of like that second option. Temporary, knowing that there's future with that road.
Yeah, and, and, you know, so then, and, and I haven't thought this through completely, but, you know, just trying to think then, are there any other scenarios where we feel like this boxes us into a, a decision that we made? And I, again, I, you know, this is a little unique, I don't know that we've really run into this, uh, other places, um, you know, we're, the hid, or Coldwater, um, we have the road up here that we want to make sure gets extended at some point to provide a northern access to the Coldwater development. Uh, that's another one that I guess will be a little interesting, just to figure out the logistics of how that gets done. I, I, yeah, I, I, I don't, I just, you know, really, it's, I think it's your, your comfort level as to, one, do you have any interest in seeing this go forward, or you just tell them, no, this is city, this is city standard, do it or don't? Um, or is there some other way we can facilitate getting that lot, uh, built on and move on?
I also don't like to have, telling them to pay for the whole road and then, three to five years from now, they work it up to put in the curb and gutter too. I'm just throwing out options.
Yeah, no, I.
And I know that road, I mean, I walk it every day, is, there is some issues on that road. So I don't see it ten years from now, us looking at Fifth Street. I was just curious if it's a road project.
I thought it was in the next couple of years.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was fairly early on in the, in the program. Um, that, that one, you know, just, um, relatively speaking, compared to the overlays, it's going to be a little more complex and, you know, we just have to kind of figure out when we want to do it and, and it's going to be a different process.
I tend to agree, Nikki, with what they're saying, is we put it in and then tear it up, you know, they spent the money and then we're tearing it back up, but I don't know if I'm going to handle and a good idea of when we'll be doing Fifth Street either.
Yeah, now, the, 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 whatever we do down there, just to keep in mind that it's shared, the, I guess, the other use of that is that Mayor Lutheran High takes off the end of that road into their gravel to get down to their shed. So, um, whatever we do, it would have to accommodate that use also.
And it is a unique situation. My first thoughts are we shouldn't be getting in development and setting a precedence that we're helping any developer now and any other developer will pay for half the road ones, I just don't like getting into that scenario, but it is a unique situation.
I, I think that if we went the, the more in-between route, let them extend a driveway, um, that would be used by both Mayor Lutheran High and them to, you know, to access that piece. That we would want to do something to make sure that, uh, it's clear to everybody involved or the future owner of that lot, that they understand that if and when there's a road project there, uh, the city has every right to assess them for their portion of the road, that this doesn't in some way replace that. Or, or that we're implying that that's a permanent condition.
This would allow them to build, sell the lot until we figure out Fifth Street.
Yep, and I, I think, and, you know, maybe we just got to talk to your city attorney just to make sure whether it's just kind of a one-page development agreement or something that, that we can have, that everybody acknowledges, again, that, that we haven't waived any rights or, uh, committed ourselves to a long-term situation.
Yeah, I think we definitely have to make that clear. And now the, you know, the owner of the property now won't be spending, you know, an additional sixty-five hundred, seven thousand dollars. They could maybe work that in with the set, you know, the buyer.
Right.
Knowing that they'll eventually are going to get assessed for it when the road comes in full.
Yeah, essentially, we'd be telling them to pave that gravel to the edge of their lot if that's what we did. And, and that it's one hundred percent their cost.
All right.
Does that give a draw? I think that's, come back and then I would like to know when, yeah, Fifth Street, I don't know.
I believe it's twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two.
Yeah, I know it's.
Yeah, it, it was early on in the.
So we do have a request that came, uh, for sharing, so look for a motion, if anyone would like to make a motion that the city would pay for half of the project and if it dies for lack of a motion, then we can move forward with different options. So I'll look for a motion for the city to pay for half, um, to extend that road. Any motion? Hearing none, it dies for lack of a motion. And then, um, we'll continue to work, work with them and, um, maybe come up with a different option.
So I guess the, the direction I'm hearing is that if the developer came forward with a proposal to extend the pay, extend a driveway off the end of the road that was suitable for them and Mayor Lutheran High, that the city would be okay with that. Now, the one thing we probably do need to follow up with is John Anderson, just to make sure from a, uh, a planning standpoint, that there isn't a variance or anything that would, i- i- if, if there'd be something formal that was needed from a process standpoint, but it's the direction I'm hearing is that you'd be comfortable with some sort of a driveway scenario as a temporary solution to allowing that lot to be developed. Okay.
All right. That title takes to six one E businesses and place of worship opening.
Yes, um, I have been, it's been brought to my attention that Princeton and Watertown are, um, working on declarations to open up their businesses in a safe manner in their towns, regardless of what, um, the governor says. And knowing that our emergency declaration for our city ends on Wednesday, the thirteenth, what are our plans and, you know, how are we going to move forward to make sure that our businesses, our, our places of worship, are going to open safely, whether or not, you know, when May, when May eighteenth comes and goes, regardless of what the governor says, wha- what are we going to do moving forward and? Because I've heard from a lot, a lot of people, that they are, I mean, we don't have a lot of businesses in mayor, they're operating on an extremely thin margin, they're barely making it. And knowing that there's few cases in Carver County and knowing that, um, you know, a lot of people say that they're very good about socially distancing themselves and, you know, people are also saying, you know, if I don't feel comfortable going, I'm not going to go. And that's, you know, that's fine too. So I was just kind of wondering, what, what are the, what are our plans and we need to start discussing moving forward?
Um, I know Tim is on the phone, I know I've been researching this a little bit because, um, I've also heard that this is happening in other communities. Uh, so I did, I did read up a little bit on the League of Minnesota Cities and Tim, jump in at any time, but I know that their advice is not to, um, go against what the state is saying because, right, Tim, there's like some legalities in that, like we could get.
Yeah, I mean, there, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, I, sometimes I have a hard, because the further you are away from wherever the phone that I'm talking to, you know, I have a hard time here, close the door, buddy, sorry, my son just walked in. So, all right, there's a number of legal issues and I understand the, you guys, there's a couple of things. You guys don't have a police department, so, you know, there's a lot of question of, you know, you guys would not be the entity that would be taking criminal action against somebody or violating this, you know, stay-at-home order, in any event, it would be the county. I don't know what Carver County's position is or the sheriff's position is as to whether or not they would come in and, um, you know, tell a business or a, uh, a house of worship or, or you want to say, that they're in violation of the order. Uh, generally, a city does not have the ability to be less restrictive than state law, okay? So, you know, there's, there's arguments that can be made and that people are making that are going to be tested in the courts about these executive orders and, um, you know, things like that. Uh, but basically, a city is a, you know, a municipality is a creature of the state. It's created, you know, by the state and it, you know, gets its power from the state. Um, there, the league's primary concern is liability. Uh, that cities, you know, if a city, you know, passes a formal resolution that says the public policy of the city and mayor is to not enforce the law with respect to the stay-at-home order or with respect to any of the executive orders regarding, uh, COVID-19, uh, if there was, uh, an outbreak in the city or if people did get, you know, if they did contract the, the virus at a, a place that was open illegally, the question is whether the city could be sued for that and, uh, the league has other cities that have indicated there are very likely, very unlikely to be any coverage for that, meaning that the city would be on its own, uh, defending that lawsuit. Um, you know, I mean, those are, there's, it's a tenuous type of claim to prove causation, but lawsuits in general are very expensive and usually it's very good to have insurance to cover the defense of them. Um, so, I mean, are there other options that cities can do to show support for local businesses shy of passing a resolution that says we disagree with what the governor says, so we're not going to enforce it? Uh, yeah, good, you could pass a proclamation that, you know, calls for businesses to be open. Again, I know that Watertown, I believe, is considering both of those options, whether the, uh, you know, the, all the way I call it, the Lakefield Resolution, um, which is the, the resolution that's been passed around to all the cities, this is what we did down in Lakefield, um, down to a resolution that just calls for the governor to relax the restrictions in a way that still, you know, allows businesses to open, but still maintain, um, you know, appropriate practices to do that safely. Uh, so that would be another option. Uh, obviously, we don't have anything in the agenda, you know, today to propose to the city. Um, it's my understanding that this is just kind of added right now, but I'm right out here to talk you through this. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tim?
Anybody?
I don't have any right now, no.
Am I still on the line here, hello?
Can you?
Yeah, yes.
Tell them no questions.
No questions, I just, yep, there's no questions right now.
Yeah, I mean, my, I would advise against passing the, the Lakefield Resolution. I would strongly advise against it because there's a lot of unintended consequences with very little benefit, uh, particularly in a city that doesn't have a law enforcement entity. Um, you know, it, I, I, I just, there's a lot of bad that could come from it, that could cost a lot of money. Um, versus, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, uh, at the end of this week. Um, if the city wanted to. If the city wanted to, you know, give some guidance as to what kind of language you would want to see in some sort of a proclamation or a resolution, I could review that specifically. I mean, I have a number of concerns with the Lakefield Resolution, one of which being its focus on the places of worship, which is generally not really the purview of the city to be, you know, going to that for religious entities. Again, all businesses, you know, obviously they're all told at this point that if they're not on the list of essential or working towards opening up our, you know, they all have to follow the executive orders up to this point. I just would caution against doing something just because a, a number of cities are doing it. I would also point out that this Lakefield Revolution that is being passed around was only passed by a vote of three to two, even in the first city that everybody else is following, so it wasn't even, you know, fully embraced by the city that started it all.
Okay.
What responsibility does the city have? And you may have to ask him this if you can't hear. What responsibility, excuse me, does the city have if these businesses just open? Do we have to do any, I mean, is that up to the state to go in there and do something or could we just, if they open, they chose to open and we don't have to do anything about it?
Tim, what happens if the businesses decide to open? What, what does the city do? Is that Carver County Sheriff's Department?
We have any responsibility to step in?
We have any responsibility?
Well, I mean, if you, if you are aware of, you know, is the city, it's basically a complaint-based system, okay? You know, I, I'm not even aware of cities with police departments that are driving around looking for, it usually comes actually from the competitors of a business when they see that, you know, I know I talked to the city attorney in Rochester and when they were going through it, you know, hot, you said, as long as Jolann Fabric shuts down, I, I will too. So, I mean, that's where most of it comes from. And if you have a situation like that where you have one business in town that is following the order and you have another business that is not, that could be a situation that might force the city's hands to do something. But, you know, the, the, it isn't clear in the executive orders who has the enforcement mechanism other than it is a criminal penalty, so it would need to be, you know, charged and it would need to be prosecuted by, by, you know, the, the county or the city, you know, could prosecute as a misdemeanor, but that would be, you know, through the county attorney's office with your contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So are you, are you supportive of, of bringing a proclamation or a resolution of, kind of to send to the governor at the next meeting or, obviously we can't do it tonight because we don't have it in front of us, but is this something that you're interested in or are there other things you would like to discuss?
Some of it, I think, we're just going to have to wait and see what happens in the next week, but at a minimum, what I'd like to see is, you know, not waiting for the next council meeting for a proclamation, but maybe even if we get a, between you, Tim, and anyone, you know, let's get a, at least a letter that we can, you know, on city, a letterhead that we can send to the governor. You know, let's get, we need to start getting things open here. I think at a minimum, we should be doing that.
Okay.
And I don't know whose signature, if you want just the mayor's signature or if every, we want full council's signature on there, supporting it.
Tim, can they do, can they do a motion to have me draft a letter to the governor that supports, that kind of guides the opening of businesses or like the idea of supporting the idea of opening businesses?
Yeah, they could, I, I mean, it's the caveat that they're not going to be able to review and approve that letter outside of an open meeting. They could authorize you to send a letter to the governor on behalf of the city council of the city mayor, you know, encouraging the governor to reopen the state and permit businesses to go back to work.
Or is there a possibility, let's say, you know, the governor decides to extend this order beyond the eighteenth, could we as a city council hold a special council meeting to vote on the letter that's developed?
Yep.
Yeah, if that's what you would like to do, you guys can, you know, definitely call a special meeting, subject to the notice requirement of the open meeting law. And then, you know, that could be, that letter could be developed. I mean, I would definitely expect that the order is going to be extended in some form beyond the eighteenth. You know, you talked about your liquor license, he's in town, and I think that, you know, restaurants and food service are a little bit aways from giving the green light from the state. I, I don't, you know, as far as, you know, places of worship, you know, I don't, I, you know, obviously I don't know what Governor Walz is thinking, but just following his press conferences week to week, I can see, you know, he's slowly opening up the state and, you know, when he had his little speedometer thing where on all the way on the left it was the stay-at-home order and all the way on the right it was, you know, the state fair, which we know has already been canceled. I, I would anticipate that he's going to slowly open things up. He has been opening up businesses that can meet certain social distancing and sanitation requirements over the last few weeks. I know that hospitals are able to start doing elective procedures again, so I mean, we are seeing some movement. But I think your suggestion of waiting to see what happens and then crafting, you know, the city's appropriate response once they know, that makes more sense to me and it makes sense, it makes sense that you'd be deliberating with more facts. And between now and then, you're going to see more cities that, that pass that Lakefield Resolution, but I promise you, you're gonna, you won't hear about it, but there'll be more cities that considered it and did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on that topic, Liz? Anything else you want to add?
No.
All right, so then we'll wait, see what the governor comes with and then we'll start getting a letter together and we'll meet again if we have to halfway, you know, before the next council meeting. If we need to. Okay. Thank you. City Council reports. Tyce, anything to report on?
No.
Nikki?
We're going to do a virtual hardboard now.
Perfect. Liz?
Oh, and the new playground is awesome. Yes. It's, we've gone over there, it's really nice and.
Yeah, a lot of people using it. All right, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post a name sign. We are adjourned.